Good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of December 13th, 2021. We are in the Bennington Fire Facility. I am Jeanne Jenkins. I'm Chair of this board, and I'd love for my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
I'm Gary Corrigan. Good evening.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Jean Conner.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Bruce Lee Clark. Good evening.
Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, who is our Town Manager, Nancy Lively, who always takes excellent minutes for us, and Jim Byers from CAT TV. So, welcome all. I want to remind everyone that if you are not able to wear a mask, you must be in the designated section, and for everyone, you really should be social distancing. All right. So, first order of events, I want to re—I want to make an adjustment to the agenda. Pardon?
Tom Haley's not here.
Oh, and Tom Haley is not here this evening. Sorry about that. Tom Haley is not here this evening because he is recovering from surgery. So, we do expect him back, we hope, at the next meeting. All right. So, thank you for that. First up, we want to amend the agenda. Our Dr. Trey Dobson is unable to be with us tonight for a COVID update. He had a minor emergency, so he's out of town. And what I'd like to suggest is that we move number nine, implementing the Town Vision, up to the number four spot, and then just run through the agenda as organized for the rest of it. Could I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you both. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right. And with that, let's begin. Jim, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. All right. And then, next up, Jean, if you would share our vision—the Town's Vision Statement —with everyone.
Uh, yeah. Oh, here it is. Okay. Sorry about that. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much, Jean. All right. So, next up is the consent agenda, and what I'd like to do is first just take—have a motion to accept the minutes of November 22nd. Sarah was absent for—that—for those two meetings. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes of November 22nd? All right. And then, so, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope? Okay, great. All right. And then, let's move on to—I'd love a motion for the minutes of December 6th, the warrants and the liquor license.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And hopefully, there were no discussions, because I just blew that.
I'm going to circulate the liquor license, because it does require all the board signatures.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, next up, we are moving to implementing the Town Vision. Bruce, could you share some information about procedures?
Yes. Currently, the procedures for the last set of policies have been out for public comment. Public comment came in. The Bennington Police Department has taken those comments and put them into the procedures where they thought they needed to. We—the three committee members have taken a look at that and made some additional suggestions. It's back with the Police Department, as well as—well, let me just finish that thought. Back with the Police Department, and I believe they want to have them out before the end of the month. And so, I would expect to see them up on the webs—website sometime around then. Also, working on that project is our Communications Coordinator, Jonah, who is putting together an appendix of documents that will be helpful for the public when they—if they want to know something about one of the particular procedures, they'll be able to get that information. So, that should be—that's the rest of those procedures, and I think that's where we are with those.
Thank you. Great. Jean, you want to—
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure everyone knows, if you're interested in looking at any of the materials that the Task Force, which is working on, you know, coming up with a structure for some sort of Citizen Review Board, everything is on the website. You go to the Town website, and then it's Boards and Commissions, and it's all the way down. It's a long—it's a long list, is the Task Force tab, and that will bring you to all of the materials, past and present and future, if they're there. They might not quite be there. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure people knew that they were there and open for you all to look at.
When is the next meeting?
This week.
Oh, okay.
This week.
Okay. All right. And then, the—the only other thing is, Tom Haley and I are still collecting information on action steps for the Declaration of Inclusion. A lot of people have provided information. It's all great. A lot of actionable items, and we will share those once we've heard back from folks that are interested in providing information. All right. So, with that, we will move to public comment. We do not have anyone that signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address any issue that is not on the agenda? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, you would?
Well, I guess my question would be, just your platform, do you provide an agenda of what we're going to talk about, like even if you decide we're ready to add on to it?
It is available on the website. You can always go to the Town website. I don't know if we have any extra agendas here.
Thanks.
I can share with you.
Because it's quite hard to follow, you know, how to, well, you're literate, so you—you probably have to know them, but I'm very able to prove to you.
I do believe—I mean, they—it is posted in Town. If someone—is there a way for an individual to get a copy of the agenda?
Oh, sure. All they need to do is contact us.
Okay.
I mean, it's posted—it's posted at the kiosk. It's posted on—in the banner. It's posted in the Town offices, posted on the website, front porch forum.
Yeah.
Again, I would reiterate, a lot of people aren't computer literate.
I agree with you.
If they walk in the door, if there's something there that they can grab, they should be able to grab it, and they should be able to follow your agenda.
That's a good idea.
It's a great idea. Thank you. I think we could probably bring a couple copies of the agenda every—every meeting. Yeah. Thank you. Was that—was that your comment? I'm gonna—so, can—I—we're doing this sort of backwards, but can I ask you to please go to the podium and just state your name and your Town of Residence for the—for the minutes? Thank you.
My name's Donald Washam. I live at 304 Gage Street. I've worked for the Sheriff's Department in Florida for 30 years, and the Salvation Army for 15 years, and I retired to this community to go to Bible college.
Great. Thank you very much. That was—that's an excellent suggestion, and I'm actually surprised that it hasn't been made before now. So, that's great. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak in public comment on matters not on the agenda? Okey-dokey. So, then, let's move forward to the mask mandate discussion, and so, I just want to start by saying, we have gotten a lot of information from the community about people's feelings, about COVID, about health concerns, about masking, about vaccinations, and we really appreciate the number of people who have reached out. It's been—I mean, I—I know I've gotten well over 100, had well over 100 conversations, many of those through email, but, you know, on the grocery—in the grocery store, on the street, by phone, people we have sought out, people that have sought us out. It's actually been really helpful, and we have heard a really wide range of opinions. I think I speak for the Select Board when I say that we all believe that COVID is a real health threat and that it can lead to death, that we all believe that the suffering that's called long COVID can be devastating, that vaccination is the best step that we can take to be safe, and getting a booster is also important, that masking is an effective way to protect ourselves and the community from the spread of the virus, and that the COVID numbers in Bennington County are through the roof. As you know, when we return to in-person meetings, we immediately put in place a requirement that in any public meeting that was held in this building—in this room, people needed to be masked, and if you could not be, then you would need to be in a separate section so that other people were safe. We have made sure that we have appropriate spacing, that we have wipes, that we—which you can use on the microphone if you wish, or your hands, and this board is fully vaccinated, and I think, as you'll hear from Stu, overwhelming numbers in the towns—of Town Staff are also vaccinated. So, Governor Scott, through the Legislature, has allowed communities to put in place masking requirements. We're seeing some of the same concerns this time around that we saw with the first masking authority, which was that essentially, there is not a way for us to enforce this without put it—having the Police Department ticket individuals, which not only do they not have the capacity to do, but it's also not in line with—with the community's desire for community policing. So, we do understand that the primary spread is through social interactions, particularly personal gatherings. That doesn't mean that you cannot contract—it doesn't mean that you—not that you cannot contract COVID in other situations, but, you know, personal situat—personal gatherings are the most common way of—of contracting COVID. And we are really concerned about polarizing the community. I mean, that is a real concern, and we are a community, and we want to be able to continue to work together and work for the betterment of this community. So—so, having said that, being vaccinated, wearing a mask, is something that this board feels very strongly about. What we are recommending this evening is a resolution that has a strong recommendation rather than a mandate, and it does require public posting in Bennington businesses. Jean, would you read the Declaration for everybody?
Sure.
The resolution?
Town of Bennington Select Board Resolution. Be it resolved by the Select Board of the Town of Bennington, Vermont as follows. COVID-19 Rule. Select Board strongly recommends wearing face masks in public indoor spaces. Whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, recommends that face masks be worn by all people vaccinated and unvaccinated in public settings indoors in areas of substantial or high rates of community transmission of the COVID-19 virus. And whereas, Bennington County is experiencing a high rate of community transmission and has been for more than a month. And whereas, all of Vermont is experiencing a high rate of community transmission and has been since October 29th, 2021. And whereas, the Bennington Select Board recognizes that COVID-19 remains a public health hazard in and around Bennington, and believes that wearing a face mask indoors is an important act which can reduce the spread of COVID-19 and protect the many vulnerable people in our community. And whereas, in a special legislative session called explicitly and solely for this purpose, the Vermont Legislature on November 22nd, 2021, passed a bill, S1, that empowers Vermont municipalities to enact local rules requiring the wearing of face coverings in indoor public settings, and the Governor has signed that bill into law. Now therefore, be it resolved that this Select Board hereby issues the following COVID-19 rule. Wearing face masks strongly recommended. Strong recommendation to wear face mask. All establishments located in the Town of Bennington that invite the public into their premises for the purpose of receiving services, purchasing products, or otherwise transacting business shall encourage both staff and customers or visitors to wear face masks over their nose and mouth while inside these establishment. Exceptions. Face masks are not required on young children under age five and should not be placed on anyone who has trouble breathing, or anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. Posting of Requirement. Each establishment is individually responsible to post signage at the entrance and at other appropriate locations stating that customers or visitors are strongly encouraged to wear face masks by order of the Bennington Select Board. A standard sign is provided by the Town and attached to this resolution. Effective Period. This rule shall take effect immediately and shall remain in effect until the Bennington Select Board amends, rescinds, or suspends this rule by future action in a properly warned meeting, or when an action taken by the State of Vermont nullifies this rule, or the Select Board's authority to continue this rule, whichever occurs first, but not longer than 45 days following date of adoption. In the interim, the Select Board intends to review this matter at every regularly scheduled Select Board meeting on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, adopted by the Bennington Select Board at its meeting on December 13th, 2021.
Thank you, Jean. So, what I'd like to do is first ask board members if they have any initial comments that they want to make on the resolution, and then, open it up to the public to speak, and I'll talk about the rules for that in a moment, and then, bring it back to the Board for final consideration and a vote. Okay? Is there anyone that would like to make an initial comment before we—on the Board, before we move to the public? Okay? Jim, floor's yours.
Thank you. Firstly, I want to say that I'd enjoy—I don't enjoy wearing these things. They make me feel claustrophobic. They make my nose run. But I believe that I have a moral and ethical obligation to every member of this community, just as an individual, to wear a mask and try to prevent the—the spread of this, or getting it myself. Now, I want to remind people here that are watching and here, that we, as a Board, have a moral, legal, and ethical obligation to serve the greater good of—the people in Bennington. So, I don't know how else to explain that to you and what our obligations are to you, to every member of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else care to speak? Sarah? Yes?
Yeah. I think that—I'm going to speak briefly. I have voice as little horse. I think that a recommendation from the Board is the way to go. I think that a mandate should come from the state level. We're not the right Board to enforce the mandate or recommend the mandate. The state has a Department of Health and Commissioner of Health, and the most current research should do that. I do think that since we're citing the CDC, that exemptions, maybe a change under young children under age five, maybe a tweak to on children under age two, since that's kind of currently what the CDC recommends. That would just be my—my take right now.
Okay. All right. At this point, do we would—just want to take it all under consideration rather than make a motion? Does that make sense? Yeah. Let's—let's wait on that. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And Jean, yeah, do you want to—
Sure.
If you want to do that, it's fine.
Okay. This is from Tom. He's not here, Tom Haley, but he wanted this read tonight. "I favor a mask mandate. Based on the huge numbers of calls and emails I received, most Benningtonians favor a mask mandate by nearly three to one. I'm sad that this is even controversial. This isn't about individual rights. It's about neighbors doing what they can to protect their neighbors. It is not onerous. We should be better than this. The Select Board should not be in this position. By passing the buck to Town Boards, Governor Scott has once again shown a lack of leadership. He should have declared a state of emergency weeks ago. Instead, he chose politics over this—over the safety of Vermonters. Once near the best in the country in terms of COVID response, we are now seeing record numbers of new cases, further stressing an already stressed medical system. We need strong leadership from the Governor's office. We are getting none. A piecemeal approach will not work, and that seems to be the route favored by Governor Scott. I am sorry that I can't be there in person this evening to participate in this discussion. I know that some Board members favor a mandate and some prefer another course of action. I trust that every member of this Board has Bennington's best interests in mind, and I will support whatever decision they arrive at tonight, provided that in some way promotes masking in public." Tom Haley, Bennington Select Board.
Thank you. Bruce?
Yes, I'm—I—I too would prefer stronger language than what we have, but I realize I'm in an awkward position, partly because I actually don't believe in passing rules that cannot be—cannot be enforced, and as a general rule, that's always been my position. It still remains my general position. I—I would actually think—I would wish that this was not such a strongly debated issue, because it's an issue of public health. It's not an issue about private rights. There are no private rights to not wear a mask. It just doesn't exist, and for—for lots of good reasons. The public health, however, is a valid interest. Additionally, I have been listening to and speaking with not just the business community, but ordinary Benningtonians who just happen to live here and who go into the stores, as well as health professionals. This last surge has taken a big toll on health professionals in our community. This one—this—it—they are not doing well. They're giving great healthcare, but that's not the issue. I worry about their long-term health, and I worry about their long-term capacity to maintain high levels of people who walk in and are sick and will die within a few days without their assistance. So, while I would wish for stronger language, I am not sure that the Board is ready to go for stronger language. There's one question that I would ask, just for clarification. If I were a—after we—let's say we pass this, and if I were a business owner in the Town of Bennington, could I, on my own, make a requirement that if anybody comes to my—I know, I just want to ma—I want us—I want this on the record. I know what the answer is, but could I make a requirement that anybody coming into my business—and there are some in my neighborhood who are like this—that they—that anybody who wants to utilize that business must wear a mask?
Absolutely.
That's—that's my understanding. It's the same as shirts and shoes and anything else. Based on those characteristics, they can do it. And I don't want us—this just passing a recommendation, I do not want that to be seen as saying to business owners who wish to provide more protection for themselves, their employees, and their customers, to require—not just recommend, but to require masks before entry. People are free to not go there. That's true. But that's—I wanted that to be made very explicit.
Thank you. I think that's an important point, to make very explicit. And I will say, the hospital does—actually, Dr. Dobson does send out a regular COVID update, and in today's update, there were three things that seem—seem relevant, particularly to your comments, Bruce. First, SBMC has postponed all electorate—elective surgeries that require an overnight stay. Second, fifteen—there are 15 COVID patients in the hospital as of this morning in Bennington. That is 15 of the 72 statewide. So, we have a large percentage of the COVID cases in hospital in Bennington. So—which is sobering. All of this is sobering.
Yeah.
So, what we would like to do at this point is open the floor to anyone in the public who would like to comment, and the way this works is—it's very similar to public comment. You must state your true name and your—and your Town of Residence, and then, try and keep your comments to three minutes. If we have—you know, if—if there's more time, you are always welcome to come back up, but I'd like everyone to have a chance to speak. So, with that, I will ask anyone that would like to speak, please come to the podium. There are wipes there if you want to wipe off the microphone. Anyone wish to speak?
My name's Matt Willie. I live in Shasberry. I own four different businesses in Bennington: The Buck Stop, Ramontos, the Ramontos at Farm Road, and The Avocado Pit. So, hearing what you guys talked about today, I—I applaud. I like it. I was hoping that's kind of the direction it was going to go. I know Manchester just went this way. I just don't know—it would just put a really—a lot of strain, just speaking for the restaurant industry, who is not out of the water at all from this COVID thing, and who's struggling. I—I don't—if you go past any window, I don't care what it is, and we're busy, you get it, but we're like barely surviving, and this would have just been an awful—I—I would have lost two employees right out of the gate, full-time. They would have left for sure, because they went in a war. I don't know how I would have asked a 16-year-old counterperson to police it if someone wasn't around. I don't—I just don't know how—the logistics of it. I don't know how I would have done it. So, thank you, guys, for listening, if—whoever you listen to. And again, my door is always open. I know people said they missed me, but I don't know how. I'm always in town, so I'm always there, so I don't—I don't know. But I'm always here, so please email me, and I'd be willing to talk anytime, so. But again, thank you, guys, for listening, and I'm happy with it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, please.
Don Washam again, from 304 Gage Street in Bennington, Vermont, 05201. When you were speaking about the numbers, especially the rise in the past few weeks or probably even months, you know, do you have—where do you get your data, and are there any empirical data to back up?
Yes.
The statement?
Yes.
And that data would come from—
The State Department of Health.
Okay. As well as—now, are—are a lot of these cases not so much from the hospital, but, say, nursing homes? It's—I mean, what's the—I guess my—my concern is the breakdown. Is it—is it more in a nursing home? Is it more in the hospitals? Or is it just people just walking into their doctor, and they're saying, "Well, you got Or is it just people just walking into their doctor and they're saying, well, you got COVID?
Well, so the format here, we are not health experts. It is unfortunate that Dr. Dobson couldn't be here tonight, but community spread is certainly a significant way that it is spread. But, you know, what I would encourage you to do is to look at the Vermont Department of Health data, and there is a COVID hotline that you can call, and there are health professionals that staff that phone line, and they will, they will talk with you about anything you have questions about and can point you to information.
Specifically to the questions that I ask the panel?
Yes.
Okay.
They could. Thank you.
Good evening, Seth Barrows. I live in Arlington. I'm the owner of Farmer Brewing right here on the corner. I actually had a lot of notes. I had a lot of things to say. A lot of you have heard the emails that I, or have read the emails that I sent over the last couple of weeks. I am surprised and very happy by what you have put out here tonight. My biggest problem was going to be with a mandate. So yeah, I don't have much else to say. I will, I will leave it with this, though. As we come down the road, because I think we still have to revisit this every 30 days, correct? If we start thinking about making it a mandate again, let's not forget the email that I sent that had a synopsis of the conversation with Dr. Mark Levine from the Vermont, the Vermont Commissioner of Health, where he said that very few people are infected while going to the supermarket or in other public places, so requiring masks in a setting that is already a low-transmission environment doesn't really do much. So I'll just leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Bates. I'm from Bennington, Vermont, and I apologize for reading, but I wanted to make sure that I didn't mess up my thoughts. And I understand that the mandate is not on the table at the moment, but this is still how I'd like to present it. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak because I appreciate that we're still able to express our opinions publicly, although I have had reservations about speaking up for fear of retribution. I did not come here tonight with the intention to change anyone's mind. I know far too well how polarizing this subject is, and most people have a hard-line stance on the matter. What I would like to do, however, is share briefly something personal for your consideration as you move to vote. I wear a mask when required. At my job, for instance, it is required regardless of vaccination status, that masks be worn if you are in a public area or unable to social distance. If you are alone at your workstation, there is flexibility. If I need to go somewhere that has a requirement, I wear one because I believe that is the business owner's right. Conversely, I do not patronize businesses who require masks if I do not absolutely need what they are selling. I believe in personal responsibility. I believe that if you think masks work and you want to wear one, by all means, please do. I believe that if you want only masked people in your store or business, you have calculated that it is not financially detrimental to alienate potential customers and should be allowed to enforce that decision. What I don't believe in is any form of government telling me that I am responsible for other people's health. I am fully aware of the fact that I could catch COVID at any time. I am willing to take that risk. Every person should be allowed to weigh the risks, and to me, my mental health, without going into detail about what masks do to me, is more of a concern than a virus that has a 99.9% survival rate. I'm asking that you please consider that your constituents are quite capable of making decisions that are in their best interest. They do not need to be babysat or micromanaged to the point of ignoring body autonomy. Medically compromised people should do everything they can to protect themselves, but I am sorry if this sounds callous, healthy people's rights do not end where other people's fears begin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jack Ripper, resident of Bennington, and I just wanted to say that, like you guys said in the last meeting, to look at the alarming numbers in Bennington, and I did, and I found out that only 32 people have died in Bennington County of COVID, so I don't see how a less-than-1% death rate is an alarming number. I think you have better chances of winning the jackpot lottery than dying from COVID. So I find that a bit interesting, but my main concern is the fact that our Southern Vermont Medical Center posted false information by altering the Vermont Department of Health's graph about the increased hospitalization. They had misreported with the Vermont Department of Health reporting 12% being hospitalized and 71 being unvaccinated. Now, they didn't define what unvaccinated meant, but if we pretend and follow Vermont Diggers, that's anybody that's just got one vaccine or one vaccine booster. So if someone's not up to date, they're considered unvaccinated, so I find that a bit interesting. And the Southern Vermont reported that 12 and 71 information wrongly and reported it as 18 and 74%. So I am concerned that not only our government might be lying to us or trying to push things that we don't agree with as civilians, but also that our local hospital is producing false information to feed this narrative. And that's just what I wanted to bring to your guys' attention. That was found out on the 11th. I found that bit of information by fact-checking them and looking at the source. I archived that just in case anybody wants to go look at it. It's on the Let's Talk Local Bennington Facebook group. I posted the comparison. You can look at it yourself. I encourage you guys to go take a look. The archive link is within the post, so I just wanted to give you guys that bit of information.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? All right, so let's bring it back to us then. All right, so I'm bringing it back to the Select Board. We have a resolution in front of us. We have, Sarah has suggested one change, which is to change the age under exceptions from five to two for masked individuals, which is consistent with CDC guidelines. So I, would anyone like to make any other comments before we vote from the Select Board? Then I'll look for a motion. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this Select Board resolution as, with the new, with the under two.
Mm-hmm.
Two and above, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right. All right, so we are voting on the resolution as presented with one change, and that is to change the age of young children needing to wear a mask from five to two, that recommendation. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye. Any opposed, please say no. Any exempt, whatever it is.
Abstentions.
Any abstentions.
Yeah.
No.
Exception.
I think it was unanimous.
I think it was. All right, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much, and let's move on. So how will, Stu, how will people be able to get a copy of the mask, if they would, the mask poster, if they would like to post this rather than their own?
It will be posted on the website, and we'll also be able to make copies at the town offices, colored copies, so that people can come and get them.
Okay, so you can get them?
Yep.
In the office, or you can take them off the web? All right, thank you very much. All right, so next up, what do we have? CDBG? We do. So next, we have a final public hearing for the CDBG grants, and we have Shannon Barsadi here to walk us through this.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So we're here tonight to talk about, this is the final public hearing for our CDBGCV grants that were awarded to Bennington. So these are community development block grants from the Vermont Community Development Program that were awarded through the CARES Act for Coronavirus Relief. They were also known as, the grants that were awarded here in Bennington were also known as the Municipal Public Facility and Service Program, which was awarded nearly 2.7 million in the state of Vermont. So Bennington received three of these grants, and they're designed to assist communities and nonprofits with grants for public facility and service projects that were in some way responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. If you want to go to the next one. So tonight, I have here from UCS, UCH, United Children's Services, Betsy Rathwin-Gunn. So if you want to talk a little bit about the grant that you received, you can, should we sit here, or do you want to come up to the, to the mic? You can come on up. Okay.
Hi, everyone. It's always delightful to come back and share with you our progress on this project, and our progress is, I think we are this close to being 100% done. The grant that we received from the town helped us be able to do two main things. One is upgrade the flooring. You can see the flooring here. That is an enhanced flooring that will last for years and years and years versus the flooring that we had identified as what we could afford in the beginning. And it's also meant so that it can be bleached, it can be cleaned, it can be steam cleaned, no matter what happens in there. We hope it has a very long life, and we really put that in in this COVID grant because we really felt that floors don't always get the attention that they need, so we wanted to make sure that these floors were able to withstand the traffic and get the cleaning that they really needed. The other piece of this grant was all the air filtration systems. You know, when we started to design this building years ago, who would have known where we are today, right? So we are very fortunate and very thankful that this money came about because throughout the whole building are these air pair systems, including the great room, and the hallways, and the classrooms that constantly filter out the air. It was cutting-edge when we first were trying to decide what we were going to do. Now it feels like you see them everywhere, but I think it will enhance and keep the air clean for lots of reasons beyond just the COVID situation. So again, it has a very long life, and we are very pleased that we were able to apply this funding and match it with the other funding that we had. So again, you know, great support from the town. I continue to share our story on a federal level, and I know we're going to talk about the Vermont Community Plan after this, but can I share a couple of numbers first? So Beth was not able to be here tonight, so she sent me the numbers, so I have to remember them now, right? So we started out, before we built the building, serving 121 preschoolers. We added the infants and toddlers. And now we serve, I have to get my numbers right, 80 of those 121 were Bennington-Chasberry residents. We are now able to serve 193 children throughout our service area because of the addition here. 160 of those are Bennington residents. So we have really been able to reach out and serve Bennington locals. It's a great community that we built this in, lots of kids, lots of stuff going on with the Y, and I thought it was worth really showing that. We're really pleased with the community kitchen and those types of activities that we can do there, and we continue to work with families in lots of different ways, even though a lot of it is virtual these days. Pleased with the playground, pleased with the ballpark that we're finishing up there, so lots of good stuff. If you haven't come to see it, call us, we'll give you a VIP tour. So again, thank you so much for the funding. It really made a big difference. Thank you. Questions? Nope, we'll go on.
Just so everyone understands how community development funding works, these grants are given to the town of Bennington, and then they're sub-granted to other organizations. So it was great to work with UCS on this project. And then, and these spaces too, that were just shown are, you know, this is the lobby now to our rec center, community center, so it really improved the space of the, of everyone who's using the facility. You can go to the next one. So Kayla Becker, who's our Bennington Branch Director for the Berkshire Family Y, was not able to come tonight, but the other grant that we received through this program went to the Berkshire Family YMCA for school-age programs, particularly those that were centered at Ben High at 650 Main Street, because what we found particularly during COVID was that we were in a crisis of working parents really struggling to find childcare. As anyone knows, with kids during COVID, it was just so, so challenging, and I'm a parent of teens, but for parents with young children, you know, a lot of times, school wasn't, you know, you had virtual school, and then you had days when you just had to figure it out. And so we put in the application to request funding to get a program started at Ben High that started in the spring and then continued into summer camp, and it was a great year to do it because it was such a rainy summer that we had Ben High as a backup location for summer camp, which was also held at Willow Park and outside at the rec center and in the pool. So this funding, which was $30,000 that went to the Berkshire Family YMCA, paid for six months of rent and utilities at the space at Ben High, and also was used for cleaning supplies, you know, classroom supplies to make that program happen, and over 90 children were served in after-school and summer camp programs. You can go to the next one. So we also have Cindy Toomeyer here for Sunrise Family Resource Center, and they received $19,000 to purchase heat pumps, a new HVAC system for their buildings at Sunrise. Do you want to talk a little bit?
Sure. To give you guys a bird's eye view, some of you may have gotten to the mic.
Go to the mic.
That's family information, family stories, really useful, what Sunrise does for the I'm not sure who knows what we do and who doesn't, so I'm going to just give you a quick, brief overview without my glasses on. Sunrise is Bennington County's parent-child center. It belongs to a network of 15 throughout the state of Vermont. The mission, our mission is strengthening families. As part of this network, we provide eight core services, such as playgroups, parent education, and other supportive services to families. Being responsive to the community's needs, we offer targeted programs, which include home visiting services, housing and case management, an alternative high school diploma program, our early care and education program, and we are the seat for the state childcare subsidy program. That's not all that we do, but it's a lot. We also actively participate in over 30 community committees. The goal here is to provide a network, a safety network for families in Bennington County. We've been doing this for over 50 years. While many of the services are open to all families, the majority fall well below the federal poverty guidelines. That's the majority of the families that we serve, which will speak to your project. As a preventative-focused agency, we are often the first step for families with young children, and we are no, our facilities are set up in a very welcoming way. We have four buildings on Union Street, which I refer to as the campus. The grant that we received through the town of Bennington allowed us to install heat pumps in all of the four buildings. We partnered with, we used some COVID relief money from the state of Vermont, and the town of Bennington picked up the difference, the gap that we had. They work amazing. The airflow is set, the, I have some of the gals, my assistant sits with a blanket over her legs. Um... over her legs. They just, they work amazing. And we couldn't have done it without this money. It wouldn't have happened. We have a staff of 27 people currently in, on our campus. When we finished installing the heat pumps, we were able to somewhat open our doors with a little guidance from the CDC and just being careful, but we were able to really get back into it. And, and that was really important because families depend on us. We also were able to complete a food pantry for our families, because many of the families that we serve don't have transportation. So when they go to a food bank, you know, GBIC or another one in town, if they don't have transportation, it's really challenging to carry baby and food in a stroller up the sidewalk. So one of the heat pumps went into that little addition that we were allowed to put in, and it's pretty remarkable. We partner with the Vermont Food Bank to keep it stocked. We have, we have diapers, we have wipes, we have feminine products, all at no cost to the families. And finally, well, I already, I touched on this already, but you know, as a not-for-profit, capital expenditures are few and far between, or opportunities, I should say, are very few and far between. And as far as I can tell, Sunrise hasn't had this type of an opportunity in well over 20 years. So we are extremely grateful for this lift. And as I said earlier, there's absolutely no way we could have done it without it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Shannon, Shannon, this is actually a public hearing. Are you gonna, so we will?
So it's just open for questions from the Select Board and the public. If anyone has any questions about the funding, about how the funding was used, about the programs, that's why we're here.
Is there like a PDF of where the money went? Like if I could see where every penny, every cent went? Where do I find that money?
Yeah, I mean, I have to, the Community Development Program each has, there have to be invoices, and, and those are all uploaded into the state grant system.
So I would have to go over to the state grant system?
You would, you could email me, I could give you my email, and then I could send you any information about each program.
If you could say, email to the mic, so that way my...
Sure. My, my email is sbarssotti, that's B-A-R-S-O-T-T-I, at benningtonvt.org.
Specifically, this program is just designed for children?
No, this was a program that was in particularly funded for COVID response. So if you look across the state and how the funds were allocated, it went to all kinds of different programs.
Well, for me, you mentioned here the, if we collaborate to request a home or a department, and I was wondering, how are you doing that?
Well, we're gonna talk about that in the next, in the next slide. Yeah, but I mean, this, as you can see, there's a lot of crossover, and, and these were agencies that, some of this, you know, it came across my desk, and then the Select Board as well. I think, you know, Jeannie Jenkins and I had talked about other, we talked to a number of different organizations about how they might use these funds, and ultimately we were awarded these three grants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions? It really is fantastic, and it's, I mean, and it's great for the money to come to Bennington. I think all of these projects would have been difficult to do without the funding, and so, you know, I think we're really, really fortunate, and, you know, I thank the organizations for taking the time to figure out what their needs were, do the application, and the work, and Shannon for, you know, all of your guidance. And I know the backend has lots of, lots of paperwork that you have to file as well. So it does feel great. Yes, Bruce?
Yeah. I was pleased in particular to see that a lot of these have to do with things that will have long-lasting effect, so the, whether it's flooring and air handling, or in your case, heat pumps, which are gonna save that program, program dollars that went otherwise because of the way in which it works. I appreciate that. I would also ask, and I don't know who to ask this, so Shannon, I'm gonna ask you. In light of our earlier discussion about having agendas out on the table, I did have a couple people ask me, when this agenda came out last Thursday, I think in Front Porch Forum, what the heck is CDBG slash CV?
It's confusing, yeah.
It is, and might I suggest that we try to avoid, I know they're easy for us, because I know what community development block grants are. I had to struggle a little with CV, and then I remembered COVID, and, okay. So I know that it will take a little bit more ink and a little more time, but we could avoid those on the agendas, because the point of an agenda is for the public to know what it is we're talking about.
Right.
And so if we could all avoid letters, a little shorthand, and you can catch me anytime I do the same thing, because I do it. But I think they're great projects. Glad that we got the money for them.
Great, and noted, yes. Yes, Stu and I are noting that.
That will also go with the VCRD, which I've never been able to remember.
Worst name ever.
Shannon, do you, do you expect that there may be more of this money available?
Well, as, there may be. At this point, I believe all of the, the funds that were allocated, particularly through the CARES Act, have been used up. But that doesn't mean there could be, I mean, in a way, this was, this was a unique thing for the Community Development Program to do, because usually their grants are more focused in on housing, for example. We've, we've been here to talk a lot about community development block grants for housing. And so this was a change that they made, and I don't know if they'll do something like that again, but if they do, I'll, I'll be the first to find out.
When you get grant money, and it's stipulated in the grant that this money is specifically designed to go to this area or to that area, and I don't mean anything by my next comment, but you know, I've watched some organs, well, put it this way, my experience has been over time, I've watched money get supplanted. And so you might have money for sewers over here, but it's being used over here for something else. So you're saying that the funds that you guys give, or that the town gives, are used specifically for what you apply for?
Yes, and we have to show a lot of documentation of that. And then the way that the grants are actually, the grantees are chosen, there's a community development board that's made up of members that are from across the state, from different organizations. So it's, you know, it's a pretty extensive review process.
Very good questions. Yes, Rose. Please, please, name and, and town.
Village Town, Mark Bennington. Does this only go to seniors?
This particular, well, this, these particular grants did not go to senior programs.
But can I just add, well, this great group, that we did do a large state that has the ability to do a lot of programming from birth to seniors, all the way through. So that is, it will affect a whole community in that great room and being able to be used for a lot of different activities.
Shannon, you have a question over there. You may need to repeat the question so that CAT TV can hear them.
Radio, President of Bennington, I think a point of clarification, something I'm picking up on, and I've noticed this in the reading of particular types of questions. Sunrise Family Resource Center is a Sunrise Family Resource Center focused on families and children. So when you're asking about money going towards something you're interested in or trying to figure out accountability, they had to apply directly, these types of grants had to come to them for resources that they need, for projects that need to be finished, for providing in this program for the Family Resource Center through Sunrise. So if there was something in the elder community that needed addressing, and that elder community association would need to also apply for those grant payments themselves, this was for that specifically. So hopefully that clears up some of the misconceptions that I'm hearing from the rest of the audience as far as questioning. That's what that was for. So that money could be going around, even if they wanted to, if it had to go toward the life of Bennington children.
That's right.
Other questions? Rose, you have, well, okay.
Is this something that the town, that the town can do for elderly people, of the youth, or, you know?
So Rose, these were particular grants, and they, and organizations could apply for them, and Shannon assisted any, any organization that was interested in applying. And, and these three organizations stepped up. There certainly are funds for seniors, you know, as you know, we, we often talk about the kinds of funding streams that, that are, that assist programming that may be senior-focused or it may be adult-focused. But, you know, I think, you know, I think your point is well-taken, that we do need to always be looking for how we serve, you know, the broader community. But in this case, these organizations stepped up with ideas, their ideas went into a grant proposal, they were chosen to receive funding, then they had to do the project they said they were gonna do, and do a ton of paperwork to show that they did it.
One of the things that's interesting too, is that even though the space utilized at Ben High got started because of this need for youth programming, having the space has actually increased more senior wellness programs, because we didn't have as much space. And one of the COVID responses is that we need more room. So now there are eight different exercise classes that are open to, you know, adults, but they're really being utilized by senior groups, which is great.
I think someone should go to work and try to some of that, not just kids, the seniors.
Yep.
And then I guess, you know, they're more likely to be safer than, you know, kids.
Yes. Sir, I think you're next. Okay.
You know, I don't think that there can be a misconception if you don't know the answer. If you don't know the answer, it's easy to ask a question. And maybe it's just the appearance that there's misconception. You know, my father used to tell me, you know, if you don't ask the question, it won't be bad. Okay? And, you know, this young lady back here, she brought us some questions that are very concerning to me, being a young 66-year-old. And I, you know, my, my, my whole take is, well, it's the next agenda, it's my prime instigator. But these meetings give me an opportunity to understand how the town of Bennington operates. And I'll be here for a long time. Because I've been here for seven years, and I watch some stuff go down, and I shake my head, you know? Because we're better than them, you know? You know, we can all improve, you know? But if you don't come up here and sit and listen to the Select Board, you probably don't know what's going on in the town, you know, you read the papers. Anyways, I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate this project, and I hope that the project that this is going on. Now, speaking of her, her statement to the Select Board, does the town engage in applying for grants for what she just talked about?
Yes, and I'll turn it back to Shannon, and I am, I realize this is a hearing on these specific grants, so I don't want to go too far off of that. But I think that's a, that's a, that's within the realm of, of this hearing.
Yeah, I mean, if, I think maybe we can transition into our next topic, if that makes sense, if there aren't any particular questions more about...
Do we need to vote? Do we, do we need to do anything for the closeout, or is it just, it's a hearing?
It's really just to let everyone know how the money was spent, and if you have any questions, you know, you can contact me by email. But it, now that the projects are completed, this is part of the process that the Community Development Program asks of any project.
All right, so, one more question, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item? Is that?
How do you know what grants are out there to apply for?
That's a great question.
That's a good question. Well, you know, I mean, I'll be perfectly honest, that sometimes I find out, find out about things like last minute, and so there's always, that sometimes there's a scramble, no matter how informed you are. You know, I mean, I'm getting emails from the state, from all kinds of different departments, and, you know, some of them, you know, you just find out about it kind of last minute. But I do, back to Rose's point, and the gentleman's question, I mean, we do, you know, we should focus then on, on senior programming. And Jonah and I, our communications coordinator, came to the senior center recently and had a great discussion, and I think that we can, you know, we should start that conversation and make a priority list. One of the other great programs is out there that, or organizations that gives grants for seniors is the AARP, the retired, the Association of Retired Persons, and they do a lot of community-based grant programs. So, you know, I think if, if you have ideas, that's really how it gets started, is you come up with a plan and an idea, and then let's look for what resources are out there.
All right, that's great. And so that's a nice transition place. So we're gonna close this hearing. Thank you very, very, very much. And then we're gonna transition to Vermont Council on Rural Development, Community Visit 10 Years Later. Yes?
Great.
So this is a revisit of, of the community visit that we had in 2012. So Shannon, you're up.
And for those of you who weren't at our last meeting, we talked about, during this visit that happened in 2012, 10 years ago, there were four major priority areas that the community identified, and so we talked about two of those kind of big topics at the last Select Board meeting. And then this time around, we're gonna talk about the other priority task forces that were formed. And thanks for Betsy and Cindy to just stick around a little bit longer, because the work that they're doing is so interconnected to what we're gonna talk about, that I said if you guys can stay, that would be great. So let's go to the next slide, please. Advancing of Bennington Community Center. So all of these photos are really pictures of, you know, the diversity of programming that we have right now with the Berkshire Family Y running our recreation center, which is now called the Bennington Community Center. And really that they're opening up programs for all ages and across a lot of different community spaces that we have available, and it's this Y without walls concept. We don't have one space that is the Y like other communities do, but we do have so many assets that the Y is using for our community members. So this picture in the upper left hand is the, one of the rooms at Ben High that I was mentioning, that seniors are really using for exercise classes now. And that has just grown out of having that space available, which really started with youth programs. And then below it, you can see the stage outside of the rec center during the summer camp. So just having, you know, more kids during summer camp and using those available green spaces all around the rec center was great to see so much activity there and so many kids. And then the bottom photo on the left is the Bennington Sports Center, the old Catamount School, using that space for a new program with parents and young kids for tumbling classes. And that's just been a great resource to have. Up here, you can see in the middle, these are some of our teen leaders and counselors during the summer camp program. And in the, the upper right hand, the teens are creating a mural that's now on the side of the, the garage that's at the rec center. And then the Aqua classes, which are mostly a senior-based fitness class that are in the pool that are really, really popular. So I think these photos just illustrate how far we've come in those 10 years. And some of those original priorities, when I read through the, the report, were really focused on developing more programs for youth, and particularly mentoring for youth and teen leadership opportunities, which I think the Y is doing so well. I mean, Cindy and Betsy can talk about some of the, what UCS is doing around mentoring... UCS is doing around mentoring and what Sunrise is doing as well to develop our young leaders. And then if you want to go to the next one, Jonah. Improving the rec center, this really is more about the space itself, the infrastructure improvements that have been made in the last few years. It's very dramatic when you look at the space, just how, you know, with the new addition, the spring center and the new lobby that you can see in this photo on the right, just the transformation of that space and now how it really started making us think about the whole campus and what we can do with it to really utilize all of it. So you can see these kids playing soccer. Is the, the fence around the green space now being used for more youth programming. The pool continues to be a huge resource and our town staff, our buildings and ground staff really deserve credit for how well-maintained the pool is because it's, it's just used so heavily, but it's just in great shape. And then this middle photo is the Bennington Community Garden, which really was expanded this year with a partnership with the Head Start Program, more kids using the space and the Y Summer Camp as well, and the UVM Master Gardeners. So all of these improvements have just, you know, kind of coalesced in the last few years, particularly with, with this new addition and, and also our partnership with the Y. Want to go to the next one? So our next topic, and then I'll open it back up to Betsy and Cindy, because I think you, you both kind of work across all these issues. This is a big topic and it's hard to talk about in 10 minutes. But, you know, one thing that the Bennington community that I've seen is just that it's such a caring community. And this collaboration to address poverty and build a poverty working group was identified 10 years ago. And it's still something that's very, you know, much a struggle today. And I think that COVID has exacerbated, you know, people's vulnerabilities during this time, you know, and the people who are struggling with poverty. But this area of communication and collaboration, I just wanted to highlight just a few of the task forces that exist in Bennington. And I'm sure that you two know of so many more that I don't even know about. But we know, we have the, the Hunger Council, the Bennington Area Hunger Council, the Continuum of Care Network, which really looks at housing for the most vulnerable across Bennington, the Alliance for Community Transformations, which is focused on youth organizations and prevention for youth, the Schools Equity Committee, the Workforce and Education Committee, the Town's New Safety and Equity Task Force. Those are the ones that just came off the top of my head. But there's so many different committees and organizations in Bennington that are working together across many different agencies. Also, expanding dental care was one of the priorities and that's something that GBICS, the Greater Bennington Interfaith Coalition, or Interfaith?
Community.
Community Services. I always think Coalition, Community Services. That they have done with their Free Clinic, which has been really incredible for the community. And then this, this topic of education, mentoring and time banking, a time banking group started out of that original community visit. I don't think that that's continued in the same way that it, when it began. But a lot of that momentum around volunteering, you see in other organizations, for example, Meals on Wheels, which relies on a huge network of community volunteers. And then some of the education groups that I mentioned earlier. And then safe, sober and affordable housing is something that I work on a lot with the Community Development Program that we mentioned, the, the block grants and the funding that goes towards affordable housing with our partners like Shire's Housing, also the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, the Projects, Project Against Violent Encounters, the Continuum of Care Network, Turning Point and Mission City Church are all partners in this, particularly looking at safe, sober housing for the, you know, those who are facing poverty and homelessness. And we have the news that we were awarded a grant through the Community Development Program for, there were two applications that we put in for the first recovery housing project in Bennington and one was awarded. So that is going to go forward at the Gage Street site. And then the Squire Housing is going to apply for the next round of funding. Want to go to the next slide? So now let's talk more about UCS and Sunrise and some of the different programs that you have that address poverty in the community. If you want to come up. Might be easier.
As I said earlier, Sunrise participates, I counted 36, we're going to say over 30, community groups, action, continuum of care, housing, everything across the board. And the goal is to provide a very strong safety net for families. Our, we, we participate with SVMC for Children's Integrated Services with the Fiscal Agent. That is, helps children who are young, under, I think it's under six and under, who, who have medical needs that need to be addressed as soon as possible. We have a family-supported housing program in which we do housing navigation. We try to help folks learn to be good tenants and how to communicate with landlords in a respectful, knowledgeable way. We have a program that, an amazing program, that assists youth who are, who are aging out of the foster care system, who helps with housing, education, driver's ed, food. I think we had one kid go to college recently. It's just, these little gaps in services. We have, as I said earlier, we, we are the seat for the Vermont, or Bennington County Child Care Subsidy Program. I'm going through my head with all the things. Our parent educator, she's doing an amazing job with playgroups and home visits. And we work with SVMC and the Children, Women's and Children's Unit to provide bags for, for new moms when they come home. That gives lots of resources in the community. So many of them. We also have another program, which is intensive family-based services, which is case management. We work very closely with DCF so that families who are at risk, the children are at risk for being taken out of the home, we, we step in with case management to help guide these families and get them the supports they need to keep the kids safely in their homes. And we have our Early Care and Education Program, which is, we do from, from birth to, or six weeks to age three, which is a five-star accredited childcare program. Those are some of the, the programs that Sunrise does. The, the foundation under all of our programs, though, is collaboration within our community, support for the parents, connecting them with resources, you know, and, and we serve, Sunrise, just Little Sunrise, serves like 1,600 families a year. Eighty percent of those families come from Bennington. That's a lot of families. And it's a very holistic approach. These families need these kinds of services. And, and, and we've grown. Our newest, in response to the community, our newest sort of initiative that we're, we're undertaking currently is a, we have a gal on staff who's wonderful and she is looking at engaging our parents, the families that we serve, to help guide our programs so we can become more effective in our support of them. So kind of hits the nail on the head with just us. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Ooh. All right.
You said 1,600 families, 80% of them serve from Bennington, Benningtown or Benning County?
No. We are the seat for Bennington County. So we serve Pownell, Chassbury, Arlington, Bennington, Manchester.
So you're saying in the township of Bennington, 80% of that 1,600 are.
Just out of Bennington.
In the town of Bennington. And then the other 20% from the outlying.
Yeah. Probably, yeah. Yeah. Quite, quite a few families.
There's another one over here.
Ooh.
Collaboration and communication. You know, I heard you talk about power, but I didn't hear you talk about homelessness.
We have a program, Family Supported Housing, who actually, we work with, I, I want to say consistently 20, 25 to 30, don't hold me on that number, it could be off. But families all the time. That's the caseload. We have two people on staff. That's all that they do. They help families find housing. They help families, teach families to be good tenants, help families learn how to negotiate with landlords. It's just a tremendous program. They help move furniture, whatever needs to be done.
Well, I don't say, I mean, I'm sure that the town of Bennington, you program are doing a lot of things that are good for the community. My concern is that, a lot of times decisions get made and, you know, the geniuses that we are, we're the ones who are making decisions. And no one's going to a person who's homeless or going. My whole thing is that I wish more elected officials would go out into the community, talk to people. For instance, I'll give you an example, and I'm sure it's been thought of and probably have to be discussed here. One-stop shopping. Now, many, many homeless people don't have a vehicle, okay? So, you know, you send me down to UCS, then I got to go to Social Security, then I got to go to another bill, then I got to go to another bill, and then I got to go to another bill. Now, I'm not, I'm not asking to move Social Security. I'm not asking to move the driver's license, if you will. But I believe as a town that if we put our heads together, we can make this possible. Like, we can make these kinds of things possible. So it would alleviate stress. You know, if you're living on this street, it's already, it's stressful. Not, you know, I mean, let's face it. Okay? So I guess what I'm advocating here tonight is, is that some folks, you know, have a change of thought, if you will. Okay? And at least think, I know that, you know, everything that I ask for is not going to happen. You know, I'm not crazy enough to believe that. But I do think that anything's possible.
I think.
And when, and, and I would encourage the select board, and, and some of you have already been down there, you know, some of you know where the homeless people live. Okay? I would encourage you to talk to them. Find out what they need. Find out what they want. Okay? Instead of people sitting here making decisions for people who can't make decisions for themselves. Clearly, they've already made some better decisions. Is that why they're in the situation they're in? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will say that there are quite a few efforts going on. And the Continuum of Care that Shannon referenced earlier is one organization that does bring together a number of agencies. Another initiative which you may find interesting to engage with is the third Saturday of every month, there is a River Walk along the River Walk. And, and there, and so there is interaction with some individuals who, who are homeless that, that generally do have conversations at the beginning of, of, of that. Yeah.
That information.
And then, and so that, it's in the, it's in the paper. The, and then I would say about the River Walk, that's, that's published in the paper every month. And a different organization sponsors it every month that has some connection to homelessness or poverty. And, and there are conversations around that. Another organization, I think that, you know, does incredibly good work in this community is the Bennington Coalition for the homeless, or, yeah. So, and, and then the last organization would be GBICS, which does an incredible job as well. So there is quite, I mean, I think Bennington County is particularly good at working together and not duplicating services, but really partnering up. And so, you know, I think, you know, it sounds like you already have some connections and I would just encourage you to keep doing that. And I would just acknowledge that on this board, there is, there are quite a few people who are engaged and concerned about these issues. And we share, we share your concern that we make sure that the services that we provide are as seamless as they possibly can be and are as readily available to individuals as they can be. Yeah. So I, it's, it's a good, I mean, I think we, we should always be talking about this. So it's good.
Well, there's a lot of misinformation, disinformation. And when there's no, you know, if I met you on the street, I'd be talking to you, I'd be talking to you tonight. And my concern is, is that I feel like sometimes I see stuff going on and I think to myself, oh, well, I got to go pray, you know, because I think we can do a better service. And I'm not sitting here advocating that you haven't done a good job. I'm just sitting here making sure you're getting proper information.
Yeah. I appreciate it. And I know, Betsy, I see you're ready to roll. But Bruce, did you have?
It makes me reflect over the last 10 years that this group met. You know, I've been in Bennington since the 70s, so I've seen a lot of change happen. And these are good discussions that are going on, really, really good discussions going on. And it's really, I think, you know, wonderful to be able to see all that has happened in 10 years. I don't know about many of you, but 10 years to me goes like a blink of an eye sometimes. And when we're reflecting on this and thinking, look what we actually did over 10 years. Do we have more to do? Absolutely. Is there more things we can do? Absolutely. But, you know, from UCS and UCH's perspective, we have worked really hard to look at Bennington as a whole. And, you know, within my division, I oversee United Children's Services, which deals with young children and their families. And their families are a continuum, right? It's not just the parents, it's the grandparents, it's the aunts and the uncles. So being downtown was really one of our goals because we know that transportation is tough. We know that getting around is tough. Being able to have a walk-in freezer and a walk-in cooler that we can store food so that parents can come in and get the food right there. They don't have to go somewhere else. Being able to be part of the YMCA campus, because it really is one, you know, we're just a stone's throw from the Ben High. We know that the core of Bennington is where the services are needed. And so it's so nice to be actually able to reflect on this and see what we've added over 10 years of, of time. So from UCH's perspective, we continue to look for ways that we can help families with budgeting, childcare. We certainly know for employment purposes is really key right now. We can't have jobs if we don't have childcare. It's as simple as that. So that's our commitment to Bennington, to make sure that employers can hire folks, that those folks can be secure with the care that their kids are getting. And we want to make sure that mentoring is really part of that. Mentoring for both our parents, mentoring for our youth through our mentoring program at United Counseling Service. That's something that we can really build on, I think, as a community. And then, you know, we talk about housing because it's so critical. And yet, we have really invested in housing. We have a long ways to go. But it's great to see the number of units that are coming on board and more to come. And it's great to know that so many people want to live and work and play and grow and thrive in Bennington. So, you know, a lot of this has been discussed, but it's all about collaboration as far as I'm concerned. We can't do it on our own. The rec center project really proved that, that it was a federal, state, private, individual. There are so many different funding layers that went into that project, along with people giving from Massachusetts, Florida, private donations that made that project happen. So I think that really, when we look at the council's work over the last 10 years, there's more to do. Absolutely. But as, as a whole, I think Bennington is really trying hard. And we just have to keep trying harder every day. So.
I just have a couple more quick slides because it's just hard to, you know, reach everyone, but you want to recognize all the partners. So the Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, GBICS, just want to mention a few of their programs. The Dr. Richard Dundas Free Clinic, that's a photo of Dick Dundas and, and Sue Andrews, the former GBICS director. and Sue Andrews, the former GBICS director, the Food and Fuel Fund for Emergency Needs, the Kitchen Cupboard Food Pantry, the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, U First, which is a free cancer screening program, the Food Fit Bennington, it's a cooking classes and nutrition, and the Empty Bowls Dinner that they partner with Bennington College, and the Bennington students make all of the ceramic bowls, then there's a big festival at the middle school as a fundraiser for GBICS. If you want to go to the next slide, Jenna. And just to mention, I mean, this, this is also another huge project that has happened over the last couple of years, which is the Mellon Foundation Grant to address food insecurity in the town of Bennington, which was given to Kappa, the Center for Advancement of Public Action at Bennington College, and this, this diagram here just shows some of the projects that have come out of that process. I think, related to Bennington, some of the most important are the community grants, so, some of you may have heard of, I believe, did Sunrise, Sunrise got a grant for your food pantry that came through that program, there are like mini grants that were developed out of, out of these projects, and conversations with the community about what needs were there. Another one was Willie's, the, the store downtown, that was able to, through a mini grant, get a new cooler for produce, to be able to offer more fresh produce downtown, because we know that there's a real need, and that downtown Bennington is a food desert. So, another initiative that's growing out of this is an effort to start a new downtown food market, which I'm sure we'll have more information on soon. And then, you know, momentum at the academic level around having a food studies curriculum, more student interns out in the community, the hospital, GBICS, and the school system all have had Bennington College working with them on projects related to food insecurity. So, it's just been, I think, a very successful community project, and, and so much has happened in the last few years. One other thing to mention is, kind of related, is this Southern Vermont Regional Food System discussion that started, really helped a group of investors focus in on Bennington as a place to start their food distribution business, which is called the Regenerative Food Network, and they're investing $5 million in a location up on Shields Drive. So, you know, these kinds of conversations and convenings are just so important to, to bring that sort of investment to Bennington. If you want to go to the next one. And all of the different organizations that stepped up, especially during COVID, to make sure that people in Bennington had enough to eat. I mean, there's, it really is worth mentioning all the hard work of the Vermont Food Bank, which is also known as Veggie Van Go, and their distribution up at Willow Park, which just was, you know, filled with people through the last couple of years. A lot of local farmers also contributed to some of these efforts, including Meals on Wheels down here on the left, you know, their chefs utilize a lot of local produce to get meals out and delivered to seniors in our community. Their services have, I believe, Ilsa, their director, said that they've quadrupled the amount of meals that they're doing right now during COVID. Everyone Eats was a program that was started through CARES Act COVID funds to bring community organizations and food pantries together with local restaurants, to help local restaurants who are also struggling during COVID, get some, some funds to create meals that could then be distributed at the food bank. So, that was a really innovative project. And then Hunger Free Vermont is the larger organization that organizes all of the different hunger councils around the state, and our Bennington Area Hunger Council, over the last couple of years, was led by Megan Harrington from the Vermont Health Department, Bennington District Director. So, she really did a tremendous amount to bring all these different groups together, and, and that collaboration piece, and talk about what the missing pieces are, and how they could make all these programs better. There's one more slide, just to talk about all the work that we're doing around expanding affordable housing, and improving the quality of life for residents in Bennington. So, some of these photos are projects that were funded through the Vermont Community Development Program that we talked about earlier. The Monument View, up on the left, which is, is now filled, and beautiful, you know, mixed-income housing right in the middle of, of walkable to downtown. The 219 Pleasant Street Project, which is going to have an open house this Friday, and will be, will be opened up with 11 new apartments, and half of those are for affordable housing, and that's the first project in the state that the Community Development Program is actually funding a private developer to do the work, which is another innovative way to, to work, because, you know, our housing agencies, there's only so many projects they can do at a time, and so, the Hail Resources is the group that's doing that in town, and they've done a great job. And then this other project up on the right is the 300 Pleasant Street, across the street, it's a partnership with Shire's Housing and the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, for families that are in transition and who've experienced homelessness. And the Coalition is also going to have offices at that space. So, that is in construction now, and will be opened up soon, and then this photo in the, in the middle is a picture of the pathway that was created between Applegate and Willowbrook, also called Orchard Village, and, and just back to the quality of life, and, and thinking about the projects that we can invest in as a town that really are for everyone, you know, and improving everyone's health. So, there's probably a lot more we could talk about, but-
Yes, and I think, Bruce, you have a question, or a comment?
Well, I, I have a couple of comments, at least. I, I would be remiss if we'd let this time go by without remembering, I sat on that particular poverty working, I think we called ourselves the Poverty Working Group-
We were the Poverty Working Group.
Yes, and you did too, Jeanie.
Yes.
And there were a number of projects that came out of that, but it was led ably by Charlie Jingo, and that's one person's name, I didn't want to lose in this. The one, I, I would say, of the four topics that we have talked about over the last two meetings, this is the one that troubles me the most, it's the one that I think is the hardest to get at, it's the one that needs substantially more work, and a couple of the, the projects that I think I would have loved to have seen go further, it is not clear to me now, and probably it's a place now where I will need to go out and find out exactly how well the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, which was, in fact, they invited themselves into GBICS when I was the Board Chair of GBICS, so, that coalition, we took under our wing, basically, so that there could be a conduit for whatever money. But it was extremely difficult to find ways to keep the access to dental care, good dental care, through the school system, and it wasn't the school system's fault. It, you know, we had, you know, we, we resurrected a, a chair at the high school, and a chair at the middle school, and at Molly Stark, but part of it is the reticence of people to, to really deal with what is a, a critical issue of their own health, and that is teeth. So, I would hope that at some point, we can deal with that issue. That's one that really, I feel strongly, we have not dealt with. I am hopeful in the area of housing, but the housing, the needs are so great, so I would ask us to find ways to push stronger, particularly for those who are vulnerable, I'm glad to hear about the grant for Gage Street, sorry to hear about the other one, because they're both needed, supportive housing for people who are coming out of addiction is, is incredibly important. So, I, that's not a question, it's a comment, sorry, but it's one that I thought needed to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Other-
I should also say mentoring at the elementary schools was an issue that I thought was a program that was really, I thought, really innovative, and it worked for a while, anyway.
Well, thank you, yes, so, Seedlings Program-
That's the other one, yeah.
Yeah.
Seedlings, thank you.
Which, which I did have direct involvement in, did run for six years, actually, it closed during COVID.
Right.
But we did have graduates that went from first grade to sixth grade in the Seedlings Program, which is an after-school program, and the graduates actually have a college fund that was started for them, so the kids that moved on to the middle school. And, yeah, it, it was, it was a great program, and I do think that many of the, many of the elements of, of that program that were really helpful have been taken over by the YMCA, and that their after-school programming and their mentoring of teens really meets much of the, of the need that we were seeing in the school system, and the school system has, you know, has, has continued with those initiatives.
Yep.
COVID is certainly putting a, a damper on those things. Go ahead.
Earlier in your presentation, you were rattling off a whole list of organizations that were collaborating, and I, as you were speaking and listing them, I think the vast majority of them didn't even exist 10 years ago.
Right.
And that, to me, was startling, like, it's not that all this work has been done, but an organization formed, and then all this work was done with other organizations. It's truly, 10 years is, I agree with you, is a blink of an eye.
Right.
And when, I mean, and, and they're-
So, we're talking eight years.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, there is much, much more to do, I'm not saying this process is ever over, because it isn't, but I think there's just been a tremendous amount of work that has happened, and I think, I don't know who those people are, and, and I'm not going to try to name them, but this work doesn't happen without people. And those people, Bruce mentioned a few, and I'm sure there are many, many more that would be receiving of an award if we had one, so, I just wanted to point that out.
Any other?
Any other questions?
I didn't want to interrupt the flow. Bennington County's population is approximately 33,000, is that roughly accurate?
Or 30, 30, you mean the county? Yeah.
Our median income is now just beginning to drop below that same number of homeless, so our demographics are beginning to change, and I noticed that we have given per capita, that's the only way I know about municipalities, we, so, you guys have done a fantastic job of providing free food for people and families, and for our indigenous population, and I just don't know how many there actually are, because it seems like we're having something new pop up all the time, so, like, we've got kitchens, we've got food shelves, we've got lines, and I see, I don't, I don't notice, not standing in the street, but, you know, waiting to get provision, how many do we have, because you can have all things all day long, I don't know which one is which sometimes.
Yeah.
How many food provisions now, like, available to people almost on a daily?
You know, I, I really don't know that right off the top of my head, but I know there was just a, like, a pamphlet that was created, do you know who the host organization was, was it, is it on the BCRC website?
I think it's BCRC that actually put that together.
BCRC has it, but if you call GBICS, the director there will give you those.
It's incredible, we have done an amazing job of providing food, especially food lies to our local community.
Yeah, we really have.
And I, I would be surprised if we were to find out that we outpace other municipalities, not just around us, but in general, the heart of Bennington County and people, and you guys have done an amazing job of resources, which we haven't given to anybody else, so-
Well, and that is so, and just, yes, and I think also, all the people that, all of those, I mean, there are a few paid staff, but really, the majority of all that work is volunteer.
Right.
You know, when you think about all the people that deliver the Meals on Wheels, meals, and all the people that show up for the food bank delivery, it's volunteer-led, which is even more amazing when you think about it, you know?
One other, just one other source of volunteerism, a, a number of the farmers in our area contribute great amounts, and I know one farmer in particular, it's regularly 14 tons of vegetables every year.
So, to be continued in the next five years or so? Nancy?
I'm Nancy White Bennington, I actually saved a copy of this report, I know recreation was a priority 10 years ago, it was talked about as part of the Rec Center, for over 30 years, Bennington residents had one priority for that Rec Center, and that was the town gym, and we waited longer than 30 years for the town gym, and the fact that Bennington residents had no say at all, you gave a piece of land to UCS without more approval, so you don't have the town gym, and I think it was very unfair. I have been to hear from one person who was in the UCS building, that thinks that it should have been there unless it's somebody who designed the program itself, it's the people of Bennington who gave every budget of mine for 50 years, and it's the people of Bennington who should have had that gym up there by now.
I do want to note that the Build Bennington Community Center and Improve the Recreation Center, the actual, the actual language in here is that we should have a big activity center, like a field house, or the YMCA, where activities could range from basketball to dances, from a pool and weight room to a sparring ring. And the community center could include features ranging from a free outdoor, from free outdoor activities and trips for youth, to community gardening, a music room, a gym, skate park, and other athletic facilities. The community center could also systematically invite college students to contribute their time and energy to youth programs. So, I would say that we're actually well on the way to doing what we want to do in a community center, but it's going to be, you know, it's, I mean, we are fortunate in Bennington that we really do have a Y without walls, that we are utilizing different spaces and, and really getting, you know, really getting the best of all worlds.
And that, but that the work isn't done yet.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think there's more we can do, and, and a gym is definitely on the list.
But again, we all understood, those of us who have lived here for decades, we've paid and supported a lot of groups, not a ballot every year for decades, and maybe if we hadn't been so generous, we would have done the gym, but we thought we were doing the right thing, and we got a lot to drive by, a lot of people.
All right, so, anyone else like to share their thoughts, before we thank Shannon, and Cindy, and Betsy, for really helping us understand where we've come in the last 10 years on these two topics, which are very important, and, you know, will continue to be revisited, and I'm thinking, some of these same next steps will come up when we take up economic development and, and looking at the American Rescue Protection Act, is that what it's called, ARPA, on two meetings from now, so.
I'd just like to thank you for making us revisit 10 years ago, because it's easy to forget, and I really do, I think this was a really fun thing to do, and I found it, I find it very encouraging, and I think we can pat ourselves on the back for what we have accomplished, but yes, there's always more to do.
Yay. Thank you all very, very much. And that brings us to the manager's report.
Well, in the, in the interest of time, I think I'll just focus on, on what, Jeanie, you asked me to, to talk a little bit about, and that is the snow plowing protocols, although the temperature reached 50 degrees today, it's hard to think about winter when it does that in the middle of December, but nonetheless, when the snow flies, we generally focus on the hills first, because those tend to ice over faster. We tend to focus, when we plow sidewalks, on the downtown areas, the schools, the post office, and the churches are the first things we look at when we talk about snow removal. I know that many merchants, from time to time, get a little bit frustrated with the snow piled up along the curb line, but that is a very labor-intensive and equipment-intensive project to remove that material, so you have to bear with us, you have to show patience, and a lot of times, we look to the weather to- to determine whether or not a thaw will help us with some removal. But in the end, when it's necessary, we do get the crews out and we do remove the snow. We're one of the few major communities that do that in the state of Vermont. If you travel to other communities, you'll find the snow piled up over the parking meters throughout the winter. So we do that for our folks here in Bennington, and it's something that is, something that is relatively unique for the state of Vermont. I think that one must remember that Bennington has more than 120 miles of roadway that it maintains. We have more than 40 miles of sidewalk that we maintain. So if your road isn't plowed right away, or if your sidewalk isn't plowed right away, please be patient. We will get there. Our drivers are trained. We take care of our routes relatively quickly, generally beginning around 3 o'clock in the morning after a snowstorm. We may go all night if it's a very, very bad snowstorm. So remember, these people take care when they're working, but they also need to be cared for when they're working long, long hours. And I would add, just at the end, if we damage your property while we're plowing, and I know the mailbox is the typical complaint, many times a heavy wet snow, when you're pushing that snow off the road, you will remove some mailboxes. Please just give the town offices a call. Let us know that we've damaged your property. If we've torn up your lawn, if we've done some other damage, we will get to it, we will fix it at our cost, but you need to be patient, but you also need to let us know. Just sitting and stewing about it doesn't do you any good, doesn't get the property fixed necessarily. So we will get to you if we damage your property, and we'll do our very, very best to keep the roads here in Bennington and the sidewalks here in Bennington very safe. I can tell you, we have a protocol that is developed by our Department of Public Works. It's a 38-page document. So it's a very complex process that we use in determining how we plow and how we take care of things. I just pulled the very highlighted things, just to let people know that there's a lot of thought that goes into taking care of the roads here in Bennington, and I think we do a pretty damn good job, frankly. You mentioned early on, Jeanie, the vaccination rate for town employees. We have achieved a 90% vaccination rate. All employees who are unvaccinated are tested weekly and report those test results to us, all in a manner of keeping the entire employee workforce and our families safe and healthy, so that we can continue to serve the public. Yes, Jean?
Can you just speak to the parking ordinance as far as plowing? People have to get their cars off the roads.
Yes, that's pretty well-known. Begins, the parking ban begins November 15th. I believe it ends March 15th or April 1st. I can't remember which. Normally, our police department will place reminders on vehicles that are parked in the roadway after November 15th, just to let people know that the parking ban is in effect. If you continue to leave your car out on the street between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. during the wintertime, you will ultimately be ticketed. And those cars that are left there without concern may be towed. Unfortunately, it creates a danger, not only for the drivers of the plows, but also for those using the roadways during the wintertime. That's all I have, unless you've got anything else.
Anyone have any questions?
No, that was great. Thank you. That was great.
Well, so this is not open. Stu, do you want to take a question?
Sure.
Okay, go right ahead. Get your name and town of residence, please.
Jack Ricker, Town of Madison. My question is, for the property damage that you said you would pay for, is there, like, a budget to pay up to? Like, let's say you only cover half a million dollars a day, and then you go, now, is there a limit, or could you specify that a little bit?
No, there's no limit. We generally are looking at where properties do not have sidewalk and curb, we may sometimes dig into the lawn as we come by. Mailboxes, we may damage fence posts, those kinds of things, close to the roadway. And this is damage that is caused by pushing heavy snow off the street. There's, I mean, if we, the damage we're looking at is probably in the hundreds of dollars maximum, and we generally do it with our labor and material and equipment to fix it. So it's not overly costly for us, but some neighbors, and some of our customers, some of our residents do complain when their mailbox is knocked awry. We try to get back and get them back in place, because they rely on the mail however long it takes for the mail to get there.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so, upcoming agendas, we have a heck of a lot of meetings coming up. On our next regular meeting is December 27th, and that's really going to be a quick meeting, really just to address warrants and any emergency thing that comes up. Then we have three budget meetings coming up. The first one, Monday, January 3rd, and then two more, Saturday, January 8th, and if we need it, January 15th. And those are, let's see, the January, the Monday, January 3rd one is probably at 6:00?
That, yeah, we have, I don't think we've set the time.
I don't think we have, but, okay, so that'll be an evening, but the Saturday morning ones start at 8:00 a.m. sharp. I know.
But there's muffins.
For us.
Really?
For us. For us. Okay, and then...
Everybody else bring your own.
Yeah, yeah. Then after that, our next regular select board meeting is January 13th, and at that meeting, we will have a presentation on the Energizer report that Camoin Associates completed that looks both at reuse of the Energizer plant and also at possible housing reuse options for the plant itself. And also, that same evening, we will have a presentation on Wyden Burke's findings on economic development priorities for the town. And then we will also have an ARPA discussion, or American Rescue Plan Act. Thank you. So there'll be a lot of economic discussion, development discussion that evening. All right, and then, yes.
I think you said the 13th, but it's actually January 10th.
January 10th, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. It's January 10th. We'll keep them on Mondays.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. And then sometime also in January, maybe not that meeting, we'll have the audit. Is that, we'll have the audit results?
Yeah, it should be ready. We hope to have it ready early in December, but we're pushing that a little bit.
Okay.
Not early in December, but I mean, early in January.
Okay, all right, okay. Anything else we need to have on the discussion for manage, for, well, hang on, hang on a second. For upcoming agendas, is there anything, I think that's everything that we know about. Okay, so, Ray, do you really have a question?
Yeah, a little bit of a question. All of these meetings are listed where, so we can see them?
Oh, they are always, so there is, we are required, under open meeting law, maybe, under some law, to, to, to make sure the public knows about all these meetings. And actually, Stuart, you rattled off all the places where they're posted a couple hours ago.
Generally, on Thursday of a given, of the week before the meeting, the meetings will be posted at the town offices, on the town website, front porch forum. We also post at the kiosk in the downtown, so that you can find it there. And there might be a couple of other website postings that we make, and of course, they are posted and sent to the banner.
Logan makes paper.
Yes. Thank you.
Our...
I was going to ask you a question. Was it accessibility to the meetings is not that, that...
Our regular meetings are always the second and fourth Monday. And then there's additional meetings, like budget meetings and stuff, but our regular meetings are always the second and fourth Monday.
And if you go on the town website, the meeting schedule is always right there, so you can, they should be easy to find. All right, yes. So this is not public comment time, so I'm really, really, really going to, like, move us on to other business. Gary, any other business? Jim? Jean?
I do, but I'm going to hold it, because we've got to move on, yeah.
All right, Sarah? Okay, and Bruce. All right. So we have a need to go into executive session for contracts and also legal matters. Could I have a motion to move?
I'll make the motion.
Yep.
Thank you, Sarah. Bruce, seconded it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we will not be coming out.
And we will not be coming out and making any decisions. Right.
That's right.
And so we are, let's take a three-minute break, so people can, yeah, a bio break.